Okay, it is six thirty. Please stand to pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always check that before you buy the chips. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February eleventh. We have two public hearings to get us started this evening before the city council meeting actually commences. So our first public hearing will be on twenty-five dash zero-three, an annexation of territory if there's a motion to open the public hearing. Motion's been made by Vieta, seconded by Janice. All those in favor, say a five. Say a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We are going to have several rules to go over this evening, so I'm going to let our attorney, Chris Stephen, run through those, and then we will have a time limit being imposed as well this evening.
So, council, so, and I will try to speak loudly enough. I know that some of the speakers may not catch me, so if there's something that you don't hear, I'm sorry. It's probably the same thing some of you heard on last Tuesday. So, the request before you, there's, so in Indiana, there's two types of voluntary annexation. The original type of voluntary annexation, which all annexation is found under Title thirty-six, Article four, Chapter three of the Indiana Code. The first type of annexation is a voluntary annexation in which fifty-one percent of the landowners requesting to be annexed into a municipality are making a request. The second type of voluntary annexation is what's generally called a super voluntary annexation, and that is a situation in which a hundred percent of the property owners are requested to, are requesting to be made part of the municipality. This request, and this annexation petition does fall under the super voluntary annexation as one hundred percent of the property owners have requested that this eleven point, however many acres, roughly twelve acres of property be annexed into the city. One of the pertinent issues in terms of annexation is whether or not the property is considered contiguous to the municipality in question. Contiguous does have a specific legal definition, so it is not the normal standard. If you just looked it up under Merriam-Webster, what does contiguous mean? There is a legal definition that is found in Indiana Code thirty-six dash four dash three dash one point five, which reads that, "For purposes of this chapter, territory sought to be annexed may be considered contiguous only if at least one-eighth of the aggregate external boundaries of the territory coincides with the boundaries of the annexing municipality." And it does go on to read, "Determining if a territory is contiguous, a strip of land less than one hundred and fifty feet wide that connects the annexing municipality to the territory is not considered part of the boundaries of either the municipality or the territory." In this case, in this particular property, the majority of the property is surrounded by city property, so that would be the boundary of the city as it currently exists, and this property is currently in the county. Additionally, there's, normally, an ordinance would come to this board, having already received the recommendation as to zoning pursuant to our U D O that was recently completed and passed. When a property is annexed into the city, it must be given a zoning determination at the time that it is annexed. Now, that would be similar to any other property in which, you know, you can have a zoning variance later on down the road or something like that, but there must be an initial zoning recommendation and acceptance by the legislative body. This property has not yet received a recommendation in terms of the planning commission because there was a public hearing held last week prior to the meeting, and then at the meeting of the planning commission, upon request from the petitioner, this was tabled to allow the petitioner to potentially produce additional evidence or documentation or something that may be beneficial to the plan. So this has not yet received a planning recommendation, or a zoning recommendation, from the planning commission. That is, it is on the agenda for next month in order to get that zoning recommendation. Okay? It is required by statute to have a public hearing. This is, the public hearing that we are having, this is related to the annexation. That annexation, this is not, what I would tell the public and the council in general, is that this is not related to the zoning necessarily. It is related to the voluntary annexation itself. The planning commission needs to make its recommendation with regard to zoning to be addressed. Okay? The petitioner is here. He is represented by council. We will give his counsel an opportunity to present first. Mayor, would you generally give three minutes on comment? Is that what you wish to have here?
Yes.
All other individuals, please, when you come to the podium to identify yourself, please identify yourself, your name and your address. If your name is unique or has an intricate spelling, please tell us what that is so that the record can accurately reflect that spelling. Also, if you know your address very well and you say it very quickly, please make sure that we, it's slow enough that we can hear it later on the transcript so we can make sure that it's accurately reflected in a minute's time. At this juncture, I would ask if any of the council members have any questions before we begin the public hearing.
I guess one question. It's on the agenda that we vote for this in the regular meeting this evening, correct?
Correct.
So how can we vote if there is not a zoning attached to that?
Well, I think you can vote for, I think you can pass it on first reading without a zoning recommendation with the understanding and appreciation that before second, before second reading, you would need to have a determination as to what that zoning is.
Okay.
So rather than simply continuously kick that can down the road, it's probably most prudent, and I guess my recommendation would be that you just strongly consider passage on first reading, knowing that there's going to be a recommendation, and then you will ultimately get a decision prior to second reading to either amend, which it would have to be amended to include the proper zoning, because at this point, we do not have a recommendation, and then move forward on that on second reading. The other thing that I would note, and I noted at the last meeting, and I would note again for the public, there has been substantial social media communication and discussions regarding the individual who is seeking this. That is not the purpose nor part of the analysis for this particular body as it relates to the voluntary annexation. So I would ask the people in the, in the audience that wish to speak to please limit your comments to points that are relevant and on point for what this body is being asked to do. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, is, are there's... I guess, trying to figure out what this, legally, we can't really, is there something that the state tells us that we can't, that we can't legally say no to an annexation into the city?
So the statute for super voluntary annexation says that the legal, or the legislative body may adopt the, the ordinance. So it is a may. It is not a shall. There is an appellate process for both any remonstrators or also for the petitioner himself, should he choose to seek judicial review by the circular superior court of that ultimate decision. But the statute itself does indicate may and not shall.
So if it doesn't receive a blessing tonight, then it could just die, essentially?
Essentially, yes. I mean, if it doesn't, if it doesn't receive a blessing, if you don't, if it doesn't have enough to pass on first reading, then it would, the ordinance would not pass. But I would, that would then trigger the appellate section of that particular code. Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you allow the petitioner an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Please let me, if you can't hear me, I've been told I talk too softly. My name is Matt Giffen. I'm an attorney from the law firm, Bakery Drinker. Our office is at three hundred North Meridian Street in Indianapolis. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of Christian McGarrett-Rust, who are the property owners at twelve hundred South County Road sixty east or Millhausen Road, and they're petitioning for super voluntary annexation of that property by the city. Last week, as the city attorney mentioned, the planning commission had a public hearing on this proposal. Commission tabled or carried over that proposal to this next meeting so there could be more time to respond and consider some of the concerns that were raised at that hearing. There's two pieces to this, and they're claims. The first is that super voluntary annexation. Under state law, the authority for that, the mandate for that is pretty clear cut. Under the law, it applies when a hundred percent of the property owners agree with the petition, and as the city attorney mentioned, the only real legal issue is whether the property is contiguous to the city, and here it is. The second linked issue is what zoning classification the planning commission ultimately recommends and the city ultimately adopts. The Rust wants to develop this land in a way that will benefit the city and bring revenue to the city, but to do that the way it needs to be zoned in a way that permits the kind of development they have in mind. At the planning commission meeting, some of the members raised concerns about, among other things, traffic, cost to the city, property value impact, and crime. The Rust are proposing R-four zoning classification. If they're going to make recorded commitments as part of that, the property will not be used for certain uses, including multifamily housing or manufactured housing that would otherwise be allowed on R-four zoning property. So they intend to work with city staff and the planning commission to develop these recorded commitments that would be necessary to address many of those concerns. And if they're accepted, they run with the land, which means they become part of the property right, and they can be fully enforceable legally against the property owner in the future. The Rust's vision is to develop a senior housing community similar to the Crown Point development that is also zoning R-four that's nearby in Greensburg, that consists of one-story duplex housing. Development like this would bring increased tax revenue to the community and would have a net positive overall community impact. Just to briefly address a few of the concerns that were raised last week, though, there were concerns about traffic. We think that because Millhausen Road, County Road there is designated as a minor arterial in the development point, that it does have the capacity to deal with what would likely be a relatively minor increase in traffic. You know, the external studies have shown that senior communities don't generate the same amount of increased traffic as something like a multifamily development. Similarly, the fiscal plan that has been drawn up by the city in connection with this proposal shows that services such as police and fire and capital services such as street construction would be projected to be delivered within one year and three years respectively without significant marginal costs to the city. As for property values and public safety, there are external studies that show that this type of community, which is a well-developed, well-built senior community, their growth of real density, does not have increased impact on crime and does not have decreased impact on property values. By the way, we just kind of a bold one note, this is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The classification of this property is institutional under that plan, and its location on the minor arterial road, both of those things are consistent with its future use of the senior housing community. So on behalf of the Rust, we recognize that the planning commission needs to add its say on this and make a recommendation. We look forward to cooperating in that process when the meeting meets again next month. But once that process is complete, we urge the council on the first reading tonight and on the second reading eventually, to approve this voluntary annexation of some of the property in a way that makes future development possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on this topic? Please come up, state your name and your address.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Suzie Dean. I reside at fifteen twenty-two South Mill Creek Road here in Greensburg. I am asking city council to vote no on the petitioner's request for an R-four zoning on this property. My reasons are as follows: safety and security for children at St. Mary's School using the walking path, crossing Millhausen Road to Mill Ridge Estates where many of them live, and concerns for neighbors crossing Millhausen Road using those walking paths as well. Traffic on Millhausen Road is already extremely congested at peak hours, and vehicles travel at excessive speeds, not to mention the blind hill on Millhausen Road near the southwest corner of the property. This hill currently poses great concern for traffic as well as pedestrians crossing Millhausen Road, and out, and R-four zoning will only exacerbate that danger. Changing current aesthetics of nearby homes, Mill Ridge is zone R-one, single-family dwellings at higher value. Those families invested in homes for that specific reason and should have the right to protect their homes and their property values. An R-four zoning with apartments would pose a greater safety risk for the surrounding community. When dwellings are rented by owners who are living off-site, aesthetics of those dwellings rapidly deteriorate, suggesting higher crime in the area. An R-four zoning will require a large extension plan to meet stormwater regulations. This could potentially result in additional safety risk if not properly fenced. If annexed to city with an R-zone, with an R-four zoning, the city's tax dollars will no doubt diminish on surrounding homes as a result of a negative impact to existing values. For these reasons, I ask you to vote no on an R-four zoning. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Is there anyone else here? Please come up, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Erin McCollough, and I live at eight one four East Mill Creek Road south. Thank you guys for letting me speak again. Since the last meeting, I've had a few thoughts and questions about this project. So speaking about the council that spoke in the last meeting, the lawyer said that the owners cannot get R-four, they would withdraw the petition for annexation. They need to be held to this and not allow them to try to come back and get some kind of rezoning on this piece of land. Also, how did the petitioner decide how it should be zoned with all or none? Number two, in the meeting last week, council said the home on the property was not in poor condition. But I have here the reorder listings for that property right here, in excess. Home is not currently livable and will require a whole harmless to be signed before entering the property. So, if that was omitted in the last hearing, what is petitioner's counsel committing now? Because it clearly says here that, that the house is trashed, and that's not what was said at first reading. Number three, I am quite concerned about Greensburg's water supply. This whole project will require this property to be on city water. Where will that come from? Will there be another reservoir dug? Will there be another water tower built? Who is footing the bill for this? Taxpayers? My water bill is already a hundred and fifty dollars a month just for me and my husband at home. I don't want to have to pay any more on the water bill, and I'm sure nobody else does either. This project, coupled with the data center project, there is no way Greensburg will have enough water for both without some serious measures implemented. If anyone is interested, I have a screenshot on my phone from Erin Rust looking for trailers. I don't know what that's about. I actually printed it off for you guys, looking for trailers. Those trailers can go into an R-four, so there's that. Lastly, I want to talk about Skybird Manor. Skybird Manor is another senior living complex here in Greensburg. Some of the residents have allowed their children and grandchildren to move in. This has caused a huge direct problem in this senior living community. These people are under the radar because they are not on the lease. There is no record of them ever being there because there's no documentation of them on the leases. So the management's answer was just to invite them out to these people because they can't pinpoint who's the problem. Wouldn't that be just lovely right across the street from us? My only thoughts, please do not annex this land. Please do not rezone this land. Just leave it alone.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. Is there anyone else here on this topic?
Hi, my name is Erin Erick, spelling E-R-I-C-K-A, and I reside at fifteen oh-two South Mill Crossing Drive in Mill Ridge Estates in Greensburg, Indiana. I know you're going to hear a lot of the same things this evening from those who choose to speak, but I am truly proud of this community of people for coming together on a matter that affects a good chunk of our real community. I was raised on core values of being a good friend, a good neighbor, and being active in the community you live in. So I've done those things, and tonight, I'm using my voice to continue to do those things. Along with everyone else, I am requesting R-one at the least, R-two. There is so much unknown with R-four zoning. Could we see a senior community? Could we see an apartment complex or a mobile home community out here? As vain as this may sound, those R-four maybes bring a change in the aesthetic out here, increase people, traffic, and safety concerns. I'm not saying that people who live or grow up, and one of the above mentioned, are bad people. My very own grandmother raised five of the most amazing people within the four walls of her mobile home. This land is not meant to home R-four. It could potentially home a couple nice homes for a few nice families. My husband and I have worked very hard to be able to live where we do, a safe, quiet, country feel within city limits. Choosing to bring in the unknown can strip away that feeling of safety. I have heard of people mentioning moving if R-four is established, and I don't want to see our little Millhausen Road community come crashing apart due to an uncommitted, unknown decision that could potentially be made. I here request R-one or R-two at the least. Thank you so much for your time.
With your chance. Good evening, Board. I would ask that you not start...
Mr. Mayor, can you please stitch in your...
Oh, yes. Oh, Scott Mangels, nine one nine, East South Ridge Drive. I'm not sure what the timer starts. That's why I wanted to get in, just because I wanted to... Please don't start my timer till I'm ready, because I've got three minutes and ten seconds. And if you start me early, I'm going to be...
Twenty-two seconds in, Mr. Mayor.
I, coming into the meeting, I thought that, I didn't even realize that not annexing in was really a possibility. I kind of thought that that was kind of a dead deal. With your question tonight that you asked that I thought was really well clarified, I didn't realize that not annexing in was a possibility. So, my talk tonight is designed around R-one, and I'd like to present now. Good evening. My name is Scott Mangels. My wife, Janice, and I have been active members of the Greensburg community for thirty years. I have been blessed with the opportunity to teach many of your children over those thirty years, and I one hundred percent committed to what is best for our community. I promise you, any designation other than R-one is not what is best. The property in question is adjacent to a housing addition that has some of the strictest covenants in this city. It is also bordered by a church and a school who share the opinion that this property should be designated R-one. If you have any doubts about this, walk Travis's trail. It is behind St. Mary's. You will see that an R-two or R-four designation will create potential traffic problems, road access issues, and water drainage difficulties. If R-four designation were to be approved per Article ten of the zoning ordinance, there are, these are some of the possibilities, and I quote, "Apartment units or multifamily attached or detached units, group homes for developed developmentally or mentally disabled persons, essential utility services." In addition, R-four can also include, as a permitted exception, single-wide manufactured home parks, single-wide manufactured home subdivisions, and tiny home parks. Personally, I trust all of you to make the decision and to say, "We would never permit that type of development." But what about future members? Will they share your vision, or could people be put in place to push this type of development through? Please keep in mind, the people asking for this annexation and zoning change will not be the people developing it. They want to sell the property to a developer. Changing the designation to R-four allows the developer to pursue any of the less-than-desirable property options that I mentioned. To me, this request appears to be a classic bait and switch, with the bait being a new Crown Point and the switch being whatever makes the developer the most money. On the flip side of this, look at the housing additions that currently exist in this area, Urban Creek, Mill Ridge Estates, and Edgewood Acres. These are the types of housing additions that Greensburg needs. An R-two or R-four decision not only doesn't meet the need of more higher-end housing, it would literally decrease the value of the higher-end housing that we do have in this area. Veterans Way is where R-four designations exist and is an excellent option if Greensburg truly needs more multi-dwelling units. And more importantly, it has the roads in place to handle the increased traffic volume with the turn lanes already in place. As someone who sees Millhausen Road traffic daily, I can testify that it cannot handle any type of multifamily housing. Anyone that tells you that this property should be anything but R-one either doesn't understand the dynamics of this area or has something personal to gain from an R-two or R-four designation. Ask yourself, how do they benefit? Or put another way, follow the money. Because the true stakeholders in near the city, the people that drive Millhausen Road every day, the parishioners and students of St. Mary's, the homeowners of Urban Creek, Mill Ridge Estates, and Edgewood Acres, feel strongly that this should be an R-one designation or not annexed at all. Thank you for your time and consideration. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this topic?
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this topic?
Hi, your name and address?
I am Kara Schieler. My husband and I reside in own property at one-five-three-three South Mill Creek Road. To quote our mayor in his most recent State of the City address, "We need to embrace meaningful change, expanding access to housing, childcare, education, and economic opportunities while preserving the charm and character that make Greensburg unique." While preserving the charm and character that make Greensburg unique. I agree with mayor. Preservation is, of what is attractive to a community, is an essential part of change. I am opposed to R4 zoning of the property at what is now twelve hundred, twelve hundred South County Road sixty east, and request that if annexed by the city of Greensburg, this property be designated and potentially developed with an R1 zoning. As part of the mayor's welcome on the official website of the city of Greensburg, the mayor writes, "Among rolling cornfields, Greensburg is a picturesque county seat of Decatur County." The mayor describes Greensburg as picturesque, which by definition is something or somewhere that's visually attractive. As a former social studies teacher, I especially appreciate the efforts, considerations, and commitments of the mayor and the city of Greensburg in maintaining the picturesque aesthetics of our local community, which includes the preservation of historical land and structures that cannot be reversed once altered or destroyed. If you haven't already, I encourage you all to drive past this parcel. I think everyone will agree that it is really a beautiful piece of property, certainly one worthy of preservation. At last week's plan commission meeting, legal representative Mindy Wester Brown spoke to the status of the house on the property we are discussing tonight. To quote Councilwoman Brown, "At this time, the house does not demonstrate any structural damage. It's not dilapidated, it is not a fire hazard, it's not infested, we are not aware of any code violations, therefore, it's not in a state to be condemned." If this is the case, the best chance, the main home and barn structures on this over a hundred and twenty-five-year-old historical property lot, including the early settlement section of the original log cabin, could be preserved in the natural picturesque green space of an R1 zone setting. While I understand that economic development is necessary for growth, I ask that you, our elected leaders, uphold your commitment to the preservation, charm, and character that make Greensburg a unique attraction for both current and potential residents and visitors.
Good evening.
My name is Ryan Wolsman. I reside at fifteen-twenty-one South Hunter's Drive, and I'd like to express my strong opposition to the annexation of the property located at four-hundred South County Road sixty-eighth, as well as the proposed R4 zoning request. This area is currently composed of a large stretch of R1 zoned land with high-value family homes, as well as a prominent Catholic parish and school system. The neighborhood and surrounding area is characterized by a low-density residential nature. Rezoning this property to R4 or any zoning other than R1 would severely disrupt this established character of this area. Such a change would place considerable strain on us homeowners, who are likely to face a decline in our property values, infrastructure challenges, and enhanced safety issues. Millhausen Road was not designed to accommodate an increased density associated with senior or even multifamily housing units. My father-in-law has worked for the county highway department for over twenty-five years before retiring, and Millhausen Road is consistently a top-three county, traveled county road that we have today. We can expect heavier traffic, lengthier delays to access four-twenty-one, lengthier delays than we already have to get on that. New safety hazards, especially at the interest point of this property. School drop-offs and pickups, which are already, present challenges. As you already experienced, overflow of traffic on the Hunter Robbins Way in the afternoons will become even more hazardous, endangering our children and families, especially those who walk to and from school, including my own three children. I'm not an expert, but it seems to me that R4 zoning makes a lot more sense in higher-density areas that have more assess, that have more accessible infrastructures, such as public transportation, healthcare, emergency services, and interstate access, all which are necessary for senior housing. I would encourage you tonight to sit back and take a look at this property more than a zoning or annex request. Take a look at the full picture of the property area that's surrounded by R1 zoning, and make a determination that's best fit for our community and this type of development in other zoning areas.
Thanks, Mr. Cullen.
Good evening, my name is Kim Mochover, V-O-C-K-O-V-E-R. I live at nine-twenty East Mill Creek Road South. Uh, my house is actually, when you look out the front window, I can see the property that we're discussing. So, um, I too didn't realize that, I thought the annexation was a done deal until some questions were raised, so I was in favor of the annexation, but, um, after hearing some other things here, I'm not. I am definitely opposed to an R4 or an R2 for many of the same reasons as the people who have already spoken to you, so I don't need to go over it again and again and again. I just want to be on the record as another face, another person who is asking you to oppose this. Yes, you see us all sitting down here in the audience, but I think you need to know who we are and what we're asking you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Charles Simmons, and I live at eight-twenty-one East Mill Creek Road South. Um, what I have here is a petition that was signed by the residents of, um, Mill Ridge Estates. Uh, there are a hundred and six signatures here of approximately a hundred and forty potential signers, and I can tell you the only reason the other people didn't sign is they were not available. Not one person that was approached for this was opposed to it, it was unanimous. Um, I will briefly read to you, uh, this, what the concerns were. This is probably a little low-key compared to what other people have shared, but the list of concerns of Mill Ridge Estates as to the future development of the property in question in regards to the zoning request of R4. The first category was safety and security. Under that was the current concerns about Millhausen Road in the area. Uh, the first point was the blind traffic coming up that hill, the speed of traffic coming through the area excessively above the speed limit. These will only be exacerbated by increased traffic due to R4 zoning. Millhausen Road is not designed for heavy traffic. The second point under safety and security was the schoolchildren and the school zone. St. Mary's students crossing Millhausen Road entering to Mill Ridge Estates will be put at a greater risk, and if R4 is built, a potential of unwanted visitors that could put the children at risk. A second point was changing the current aesthetics of the area. This is a high-value, single-family R1 zone. We are concerned about the impact on the value of our properties and homes. A third point was the demographics of the population that would be residing in an R4 zone if, for example, an apartment, that would also create safety concerns. Number four, which, uh, is somewhat speculative, uh, but it was brought up, if the potential developer of this property is Henry Fischers in Indiana, we would be very concerned and not in favor. The last point on the petition was, "We wish to see this property zoned R1," and I would like to introduce this to you.
Yep, we give it to you. Thanks, Mr. Simmons. Is there anyone else from the public here to speak on this topic?
My name is Lee Burber, and I live at fifteen-twenty-one South Mill Creek Road. I owned the property from December, uh, two thousand and fifteen to December of two thousand and twenty-two. I bought the property with the intentions to build a house there someday and keep it, as it has always been, a small farm. The same intentions were made to me when I sold it. I know the property really well, I'm sure better than anyone else here tonight. I spent many hours over there just keeping things up. There's a lot of water that runs through this property, not only the water from the property itself, but from St. Mary's, from the St. Mary's property and the fields to the east and south. Any construction or dirt work done to this property cannot impede the flow of water from its neighbors. The hillsides from the middle to the south side of the properties are limited to how much could be done to them without affecting its neighbors. There are ser, there are several acres that will not be usable due to setbacks, hillsides, blizzome, neighbors' drainage, and the actual stream of water presented to the property. The safety concerns especially if elderly would be the landscape. The elderly does not want to deal with steps, stairs, or hillsides. Any kind of major housing is going to affect everyone coming into, into town from the start. St. Mary's, Mill Ridge, Bailey Court, Edgewood, US four-twenty-one, Bearview, and the Reserve of Sandy Creek. Adding traffic is only going to cause more congestion at these intersections that are already bad. If this were to cause one death in the future, will it be worth it? Our el, our elderly or whoever we build housing for should be in a safe location. They should be able to walk to a store, restaurant, or bank. They should be able to go on walks with their loved ones and pets. We currently have locations that meet this criteria. I'm not sure why we are not pursuing these locations. Some things in life are staring you in the face and makes the decision easy. If the safety and location concerns are not enough for you to decide, I ask that you take time to look at the property in person. I would be happy to meet with any or all of you, with the permission from the property neighbors. I'm sure I can point out the challenges that this project has. A recent election has won, was won because the citizens, taxpayers, wanted to be heard. We all would like to be heard here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen.
My name is Larry Stark. My wife and I live at eight-one East Mill Creek Road, Greensburg. And, um, I think, first thing, I think voting on this point in time puts you all at a disadvantage because you really don't know what you're voting for, and I know this is the first reading, but I really think this should have been tabled until you know what you're voting for R1, R2, R3, or R4. So, that's the first point. And in addition to what others have said about, uh, you know, the concerns of this property, um, putting that many, uh, buildings in there, you know, with the increased water runoff associated, that stream actually runs right in my house, and there's already erosion from that stream as it is today. And with something like Crown Point and the water erosion that's going to be added to that stream, even with a retention pond, I'm not in favor of adding, you know, having more erosion behind our house. We're not in favor of the R4, we're in favor of the R1. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this topic?
I live at fifteen-oh-eight South Mill Crossing Drive. I'm coming to be a little bit different with a little bit of a, a homicide. So, uh, I have two young drivers. And they, uh, God willing, my youngest is gonna get her permit tomorrow. Everybody need her payment. We are gonna need every minute we can get with her, but I'm worried about the traffic part. I'm not worried about the, I obviously don't like R4, but I think we're talking more about the annexation than anything, I assume, tonight. I couldn't make it last week, so I have one not feeling good, but I have an eighteen-year-old and a fifteen-year-old. Good lord, we do not need more traffic on that road. It takes me forever to get out in the morning to go to work. I need her to be able to, that line heels bad enough, but her attention span is that of a mass, and it is just not gonna work. So, I feel like we're a little bit backwards tonight anyway with, with what we're doing. To me, it seems like we're getting the cart before the horse. I'm not part of government, you guys are. Um, I trust your judgment, but I just imagine you might homicide. Most of us are parents here, so I just want to say, please.
Thanks, Ms. Cullen. Is there anyone else here to speak on this topic? Final call. Hearing and seeing none, council, I would take a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
Motion taken by Kevin, second by Jamie, all those in favor, signify by a high.
High.
Those opposed. Okay, Zach, we will move on to our second public hearing for ordinance twenty-five-nine-four, which is an alley dedication on Wolf Street.
Motion closed in public.
You do.
I'm in.
Motion taken by Jamie, second by Mark, all those in favor, signify by a sing high.
High.
That was opposed. Okay.
I will bring up the area for vacation. This alley is off of East Rainbow Street running north-south. As you see in the picture, the applicantee for the vacation is Five Star Path Direction, which owns the property here to the east and leads two properties to the west. Their petition is to vacate the section of alley between their properties and their properties in the middle. The intention of their vacation is for a future driveway put in place from South Wilder Street to their property off of East Rainbow Street. I have not heard or received anything from the public in regards to this stage. The traffic committee did vote in favor of this vacation.
You'll step aside, boys. Is there anyone from the public here that wishes to speak on this topic? Please state your name and address for the reference.
Noel Henry, two-ten South Wilder Street, Greensburg, Indiana. Um, I know it don't really concern as my property, but it does in a way because I don't feel that if he takes over two properties that he's gonna work himself down the alley to take everybody else's. That's what I have a problem with. So, if that's the thing that they're thinking, then I do not agree with it.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else from the public here who wishes to speak on this petition? Is there anybody else from the public here who wishes to speak on this petition? Final call. Zach, the alley does not cross the railroad, correct? It terminates at the rail?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, any thing? If not, take a motion to close the public hearing of twenty-four oh five. Motion taken by Jamie, seconded by Kevin, all those in favor, signify by a aye. Those opposed. Okay, we will now move into the main part of our meeting. It being seven eighteen, the meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order upon the conclusion of the two public hearings. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Kane. Mark Carmen.
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood.
Here.
Dr. Robbins team.
Here.
Wyada McKenzie.
Here.
Darryl Poling.
Here.
And Darryl Trustler.
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from the January fourteenth public hearing for twenty-five oh one and the January fourteenth regular meeting. If there are no additions, edit for corrections, those will stand as presented. Hearing and seeing none, we will accept those. I believe that there being no new business, we'll go directly to new business. I think it might be in the best interest if we flipped twenty-five oh three and twenty-five oh one. The council have made a difference. Motion taken by Jamie, seconded by Darryl, all those in favor, signify by a aye. Those opposed. Okay, Sarah, what can you tell us about twenty-five oh three, which is what we just had a public?
Well, you read online.